We're gonna go ahead and get started, make sure you have a study guide and a pen if you need one. Anybody need a study guide or a pen? Looking good. Okay, on the inside cover, you see kind of the outline of the schedule of this, of this study of who's gonna be teaching what Sundays as we know it right now. You notice there's one Sunday that skipped. There's something going on that day that you might know about the Super Bowl, something like that. And we thought if the Saints made it, none of you would be here anyway, so, you know, we kinda changed. So, anyway, that's, that's kinda the deal. One quick announcement, next Sunday night is church conference. We'll still have this at five o'clock and the church conference will be immediately after this study at six o'clock, or 6:05 is what it's listed at. So, in case you're wanting church conference, we'll be next Sunday as scheduled, but it'll be immediately after this, okay? Any questions or comments before I pray and before our pastor comes to lead us? Everybody got a study guide, everybody got a pen, okay? Alright, let's pray. "A gracious, loving, heavenly Father, we just come to you, we're overwhelmed by your mercy and your grace in our lives. And Father, you're so good to us, and you've been our shield at so many times. And Father, we come tonight to confess that we need you. Father, we need you to open our eyes to the Scripture. Father, we'll have the lessons that you have for us tonight. We pray for our pastor, we lift him up, give him clear thoughts. Father, give him the wisdom he needs at the moment as he leads us from your Word. But Father, most of all, we pray that your, your Word will come alive in our lives tonight. Father, through your Spirit, that we'll, we'll understand things that we haven't before by your illumination. And Father, we just praise you for what you're gonna do, and we're so thankful for all the things that you have done. Father, we're just can't understand sometimes how you love us, but we thank you that you loved us so much that you sent your only begotten Son to die for us. So it's in his precious name we ask all these things. Amen. Pastor."
Alright, you have a study guide that honestly, you may or may not need. I hope you do. It's been some work put into those study guides and the slides, and I'm gonna do the best I can. I feel very overwhelmed, this is a, such an important text. And I've been looking at about three or four different documents for the last couple of days, and I never feel ready, but I don't feel ready tonight, so I need God's mercy. And I need God's wisdom, like Dennis just prayed. So, if you don't know it, we're gonna be in First John tonight, we're gonna be in First John 1. We're gonna be in verses 1 through, actually, chapter 2, verse 2. So, First John 1, 1 through 2, verse 2. And I want you to think about the, the focus of this particular lesson is fellowship. So when you think about fellowship, what comes to mind? Besides food, I knew somebody was gonna say food. Wouldn't be a room full of Baptists if we didn't, we got a fellowship around food, right? So, think about what role fellowship plays in your life. Think about how important it is, you can also think about how it's been disrupted in the last several months. And so we really get to see, we really realize how important it is when we lose it. I want you to think about who you choose to have fellowship with. Now, does, does our society, this might be inviting a fight, but does our society encourage fellowship or discourage fellowship? I guess it depends on what kind of fellowship we're talking about. If we're fellowshipping with a screen and I'm checking, you know, I'm giving you a thumbs up on your picture that you posted about what you ate for lunch, I guess we could call that fellowship. But when we, you know, when we think about fellowship, we're thinking about each other and how we interact together. But let's add God to the equation. Think about fellowship with God. And so we think about fellowship with each other, and when we say fellowship with God, what changes? It kinda gets a little bit more difficult, right? Because the ways that we explain fellowship are, are in some ways hard when we talk about our fellowship with God. I want you to listen to these two sentences, if I can find. And I can't. I wanna give you some background, we, I've, I've stressed context. Writer, who he's writing to, and place, and, and context, I wanted, I wanted to just give us some background on John. So John is, is the same guy that wrote the Gospel. And he's writing to instruct believers in order to correct their understanding of who Jesus is. Because doctrine, if we think about doctrine, what does doctrine mean? Doctrine just means teaching, it means hopefully correct teaching, and it matters. And so John's writing to this church, or these churches. He wants to stand, them to understand how Jesus can impact their daily lives, how he should, can, and should impact their decisions, how he should impact their future. And so he writes these in response to some disagreement. There's some disagreement among believers about their theology. Theology, what we believe about God, how we relate to God, how God relates to us. And so in, in his Gospel, in John 14, when I say John 14:6, that should ring a bell. "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except through me." He goes on to say, "If you know me, you will also know my Father." So he was concerned that they were being bombarded with things that weren't true about God. And there were these people called the Gnostics, and there's this debate out there. Was he addressing the Gnostics, was he not? And that has a lot to do with the timeframe of when it was written. But they would say, the Gnostics were saying that he really, Jesus didn't really come in the flesh. That's a big deal, right? It's, it's a bedrock of what we believe. Because they believed that flesh, skin, the things that we deal with and handle and touch and do in, as far as our bodies were concerned, those things are bad, but spirit was good. So if Jesus was good, he couldn't have come in flesh, because flesh was bad. And so he couldn't have resurrected bodily from the grave. He was also, he, he was also concerned about something else. The nature and mission of Jesus leads us to right understanding of our sin. So we have, have a, we have to have a correct understanding of who Jesus is. We also have to have a correct understanding of what sin is and how it affects that relationship with God. So people were minimizing sin. We don't have that problem today though, do we? We never minimize our sin, especially when it comes to ourselves. When other people do it, we maximize that sin, but when we do it, it's not, I mean, it's not really that bad. And he was, that, those types of things were creeping into the church. And he just wanted them to have a right thinking. So he gives them a word of encouragement. And while he does it, he's giving them a picture of who Jesus is and helping them understand how, how serious sin is, but he also encourages them with how much God loves them. What a great balance to see. Who God is, who Jesus is, what we believe about Jesus, what we know and has to be true about Jesus, that up against our sin, and what that, how those conflict with each other. And we can go kind of on an up and down thing, and then he gives us, "But God loves you so much," that, and we're gonna get there. So it's kind of like a blueprint. And First John, I spent a lot of time trying, or committing this book to memory several years ago, because I kept, I kept finding myself in conversations using this, using this, this book. First John 2:2, one of my, one of my favorite verses, First John, chapter 5, verses. And so it's such an important, an important blueprint. So, he's writing to leaders. John was, I love how he and his brothers were known, they were, you know how his brother, he and his brothers were known, they were called the what? The sons of thunder. The sons of thunder. And Jesus called this guy, John, out of a fishing profession, okay? Not a superhero, he didn't walk around with a nest on his chest, he was just a fisherman. Jesus walks up to him, calls him to follow him, he follows him. And now this man, under the authority and power of the Holy Spirit, is writing this letter to churches. Now, there's a debate about when it was written, what year it was written, most, most scholars think it was late first century. I don't wanna get bogged down in all that too much, but the focus for us is what, what I've just shared with you. So I wanna get into, I wanna get into the Word. Does that sound like a good idea to y'all? Enough of the pleasantries, let's get into the Word. First John 1, I'm gonna read 1 through 4. "What was from the beginning? What we have heard, what we have seen with our eyes, what we have observed and have touched with our hands concerning the Word of life? That life was revealed, and we have seen it, and we testify and declare to you the eternal life that was with the Father and was revealed to us. What we have seen and heard, we also declare to you, so that you may also have fellowship with us. And indeed, our fellowship is with the Father and with his Son, Jesus Christ." We are writing these things, why? I love it when writers tell us why they're writing. "We are writing these things," John is good about that, "so that our joy may be complete." Remember, toward the end of his Gospel, he gave them the reason why he wrote, so that you would believe that Jesus is the Christ, right? So in this first four verses, John is not coming gently against Gnostics and against heretics, okay? It sounds pretty gentle to us, because it's pretty familiar to us. But what he is, what he has started, he has opened up a can on these people. And he's bringing, just like his nickname says, the thunder. The son of thunder is bringing the thunder, and it's, it's pretty awesome. So your first couple blanks, personal, under personal testimony, First John 1, 1 through 4. Number one, knowing Jesus was from the beginning and that he is the Word of life are not things one comes to know simply by watching. Simply by watching. So he's, he tells us in the first verse that Jesus is the eternal Word. And it echoes what we would call, remember when we went through the Gospel of John, the prologue of the Gospel of John. He's, he's making this astounding claim that Jesus was there and his creative power was essential to creation in every detail. Now, it's easy for us to hear these things and just kinda go, well duh, we already know that. I mean, let's, let's consider that Jesus' power, that he, we're gonna see the word eternal in just a second. That he was there and his power was necessary for everything to be created. All things were made through him, without him, nothing was made, that was made. He was necessary. He wasn't just watching his father build something and amazed by it, he was, he was part of it. So think about people that were raised as Jews, and so this word, "Let there be," let there be water, let there be light. Jewish people are hearing, okay, those words were spoken by this guy. And then he says, "The word became flesh." And flesh means that he became flesh, he wasn't a ghost, he didn't just look like he was flesh. It was, he was flesh. And if he was not flesh, then guess what that does to the power of the cross? It demolishes the power of the cross. So he had to come in flesh, and he did. So John is taking us all the way back to the beginning and that he was one with God in his creation, and, and he was there when it started. So it's foundational to our theology and our Christology, what we believe about God, what we, what we believe about Jesus. And I've mentioned already, this Gnosticism, it was this, there's some, there's some like big words in here, and kinda gets complicated, and I've tried to like sift through there so that I can keep it on my level, which is kinda low. Some of y'all intellectually are, you know, you're up here, I'm sorry, I'm not there. But he's talking about this dualistic philosophy and, and matter, matter's bad, spirit's good, okay? I've already said that. But they're rejecting what John and the apostles were teaching that Jesus was, had come in flesh, he was God in flesh. And so he's come, again, he's hammering creation truth right off the bat. What we, what's from the beginning, we've, we've heard it, we've seen it, concerning the what, the Word of life. He spoke the Word of life and things were made, alright? So he's also the incarnate word, he's the eternal word, he's the incarnate word. And that means something deeper than just cells in human biology, alright? This life, he's saying, this life is, is God life, this life is divine life. And he's building on again, the Gospel, his Gospel prologue. And he gives these four consecutive sensory verbs, you know what a sensory verb, verb is? Seen, touched, observed, heard. What we have heard, seen, observed, touched. He's saying, what we, what we really need to be emphasized here is, I was, I was eyewitness to him. 2 Peter 1 says the same thing, we were eyewitnesses of his majesty, right? So he's dismantling this, this teaching that Jesus did not really come in the flesh, alright? Move to verse 2, he's the life-giving word. "That life was revealed, and we have seen it, and we testify and declare to you the eternal life that was with the Father and was revealed to us." Christmas season just was over, and if you're a good Christian, then you watched It's a Wonderful Life. If you didn't watch It's a Wonderful Life, you need to repent, you need to make that right with the Lord, because that's the best Christmas movie ever, right? I mean, it's much better than Elf, Elf is funny, but come on, It's a Wonderful Life. You know George Bailey plays, I mean Stuart, Jimmy Stewart plays George Bailey, and he needs an angel to reveal to him how important his life is. You remember the story, it is an incredible story. I think, hopefully one day, I'm gonna preach a Christmas series on that movie. Obviously, I'm gonna use the Word, I'm not just gonna preach the movie, I'm gonna use God's Word, but I really wanna do that sometime, anyway, I digressed, huh? That life was revealed, so he's not saying that, that Jesus has revealed, has been revealed to us so that we'll know something in our brains. It's not just this knowledge is what he, is what he's saying. And he emphasizes the fact that we have seen him. And again, we read that, and it's not news to us, but this is a man who is writing, who's, who was, who was with him. We have seen him. You can imagine, I mean, think about things that you've seen. You've heard of the Northern Lights, has anybody seen the Northern Lights before? Me and my wife wanna see the Northern Lights really bad, and I can't, I, you know, seeing them on TV is, is really cool, but I can't imagine like seeing, think about you, what, things that you have seen, and you're like, oh my word, a picture does nothing, the television does nothing. He was with Jesus, and he says, "We testify and declare." And what he's saying is, our job as apostles is to witness and proclaim. Witness and proclaim. So they saw him in his body, in his flesh, walking, they saw him heal, they touched him, he hugged them, they put their arms around each other. And then their job was to go out and preach what they saw. And if we know good news, and if we know Jesus, we know good news, then what do we want to do with good news? We wanna do what George Bailey did after he realized his mouth was bleeding, right? "My mouth's bleeding, Bert, what do you know about that?" And he runs down the street, and he's beating on windows telling everybody Merry Christmas, because it's good news, I'm alive, I see how valuable my life is. And so that's what we should be doing as, as believers. We know the best news. I love asking people, like when I'm checking out at a store or something, I'll say, "Have you heard the good news?" And they're like, "What?" Man, you, just like that, you got them. Because people are desperate for good news, this was their job as apostles. They witnessed it, now go preach it. And then we see this life was revealed and is eternal. Now, we think of eternal as, as my watch. He just always was, he always was and he always will be, but it's not just that, it's, it's the quality of life that Jesus shares with God. It's this relationship lived with the Father. Lived with the Father. So if we really want this wonderful life, I'm sorry to keep going back to that, but we find it in Jesus, who is, who has this relationship with, with the Father, and revealed it to us. And he says, "That life," if you imagine the beginning of verse 2, "that life," kind of in italics, "that life" broke into human history and changed everything. I love the guy, is it Phil, the daddy in the Duck Dynasty? He says he split time in half. He split time in half, he broke into our lives and changed everything. Then we have the declared word, the declared word in verse 3, what we've seen and heard, "we also declare to you," the focus on incarnation and also this experiencing him personally, he keeps driving this, and we declare to you. But here's, here's what we declare to you, it raises this question. "What words in this life," this writer asks, "what words in this life are to be believed?" How in the world do we sift through all the things that we hear in this life? And how do we know what we believe? Because we're inundated by news, we're inundated by our words and stories and this and that and videos, what, how do we sift through that? We're challenged to know the truth. And he says, "It depends on the truth of the source." You ever, you, you see these things as you stand in line at the grocery store, and you look at this on the front of this magazine, and you know, well, I know that's a lie, why? Because of the name of the magazine, that's not a reputable source. They're not worried about the truth at all. So he's emphasizing the truth, that what makes it truth, all, it all goes back to the source. And John is saying, the source of truth is what we're teaching you as the apostles. And he says, "So that you may also have fellowship with us." It seems that he's thinking about John 17, you remember John 17? If you want to be blessed, read John 17, because Jesus prays for you in John 17. And he prays that the fellowship is this, it's divine in its origin, meaning it comes from God. It's supernatural in its character, means essentially, it's, it comes from God, God gives it, God does it, and it is available, but it's available only through Christ, it's available only through Jesus. "Our fellowship is with the Father and with his Son, Jesus Christ." So, the quality of life that Jesus knows with God. Not just he always has been and he always will be, but the kind of life Jesus knows with God. He's saying, "We wanna have that kinda life with God. And not only do we wanna have this vertical life with God, but we wanna have this kind of life with each other." Think about that, man. Think about that for a minute, say la. So these apostles are transformed by his Word. And then they go out into the world on mission. And then we have the written word in John, in, in verse 4. "We are writing these things so that our joy may be complete." The purpose is so that our joy may be complete. And there, he talks about Greek manuscripts and the, and the your and the our, but it makes sense that it's our, because it's fundamental to this idea of community, us knowing God, but knowing God together, and having this eternal type relationship with God like Jesus has with God. Alright, let's move to God is Light, First John 5 through 10. Your number one, I believe, is, if you're, if we're going to have fellowship with God, it must begin... Did I do number two of the last one? Sorry, it's incarnation. This one, "If we're going to have fellowship with God, it must begin by listening to his words through Scripture." By listening to his words through Scripture. The second one is this, we're gonna get right into it. John uses the motif of light and darkness to explain what fellowship with God looks like. Light and darkness. He says, "This is the message we have heard from him and declare to you." That's a bold statement. God has given us this message, we heard it from God, and we're declaring this message to you. Every preacher's goal, or should be, anyway, get a message from God and declare it to the people. That God is light, and there is absolutely no darkness in him, this, this polarity. The odd, direct opposites, light and darkness, and how total opposite they are. And he uses this same thing in his Gospel. But it means this, light is living a life in fellowship with God. Walking in the light is fellowshiping with God, walking in the light is doing God's will. Darkness is what? It's the opposite of that, it's living a life without God, it's opposing God's will. And he goes on, and he says, "God is light." So he's coming against this, these heresies. And he says, "There is no darkness in our God. There are no mistakes in our God, there's not a hint, a stench whatsoever of, of sin, of darkness in our God, not, not in any way, shape, or form." And it sets up this, these three if we say, alright? If we say, and when we say, "if we say," guess what that means? It means then, somebody was saying it. That's what that means. And he's gonna come against three if we says, alright? First one, "If we say that we have fellowship with him," that's First John 1:6 through 7. "If we say we have fellowship with him yet walk in darkness, we are lying and are not practicing the truth." So someone was making this claim. They were, in fact, if they're making that claim, they're walking in darkness. And with the Jews, when they, when you talk about how one was walking- And with the Jews, when they, when you talk about how one was walking, it's not talking about like, do you walk like Fred Sanford kinda thing, you know? Walk this way, talk this way kinda thing. It's how you live. So when they, when the Jews thought about they, someone's walk, it was really, how, how are they living? To walk in darkness is to live a lie. It is to not practice the truth. So claiming fellowship while breaking fellowship is living a lie. That's a big sentence right there. And I know I'm lulling you to sleep and this is kinda getting... Stay with me. Claiming fellowship while breaking fellowship is living a lie. Now, that's true for them and it's true for us. If we're living in a way that a Christian should not be living, we're breaking fellowship with believers. And that is not a small thing. So if we claim that we have fellowship, but our life says differently, what does that say? I love the contrast in first John. It's very weighty because, you know why? Because it sifts the wheat from the tares. It says, "If you're doing this, this is a sign of a believer. This is a sign that you're not a believer." And it's very explicit. And so it's this constant back and forth between what is truth and what is right and what is Christian. And this is not any of those things. This is the opposite. And it's not to condemn, it's to wake people up and let them see the truth. I can't find my spot. So to walk in the light, I love this phrase, "is to walk hand in hand harmoniously in the community, following the apostles' teachings, following the truth about Jesus, walking hand in hand." What does the world think? What would, what would, maybe I should say, what would the world think? What would the world think if they saw the churches of Jesus Christ walking hand in hand harmoniously? Having fellowship with one another in all man. If we walk in the light, as he himself is in the light, we have fellowship with one another and the blood of Jesus, his son, cleanses us from all sin. The offering that Jesus made, it's not just about joining this cool club with a bunch of people that love each other and they get along all the time. It's people who have been ransomed and redeemed, sinners who have fallen under the authority of Christ and have trusted his sacrifice that he gave, that he offered. And it was enough and he's made them clean and because of that, they walk together. They know this God intimately and they have this relationship with each other. And he says, "Jesus' blood cleanses from all sin." It's interesting in the Greek, the Greek, all is singular. And that, that doesn't mean that he just cleanses you from one sin, as in singular. It means literally, it can be translated, it cleanses you from every single, every single sin. So he's focusing on the singular, the individual, the specific, love that word, but those specific sins. And it seems again that he's reflecting on John seventeen. When Jesus says this, "I pray they all be one." I pray that they all be one. "May they also be in us," he's talking to his father in heaven, "may they also be in us, so that the world may believe you sent me." What would the world do if we walked harmoniously? They would believe that God sent Jesus to the earth to ransom people. Just by us loving one another and getting along. The second if we say comes in one, eight and nine. Sorry. Let me give you your blanks. I'm not doing really, really well at following this outline. John used three if we say statements to demonstrate people's misunderstanding of how their sin impacts their fellowship with God. Number two, the Gnostics, and that Gnostic is G-N-O-S-T-I-C-S. The Gnostics believed it was possible to achieve a level of perfection. The answer to sin in our lives is to expose it to the power of the cross. And then first, we confess that he is faithful and second, that he is righteous. We're gonna, gonna get there. I'm sorry. So the second if we say in eight and nine, "if we say..." What? "If we say we have no sin." Have you ever, have you ever asked somebody if they've sinned and they said, "No?" I have. And it's hard sometimes to convince them that differently. Have you ever lied? No. Man, it's hard to get anywhere with somebody like that, I'm telling you. "If we say we have no sin," it's a second false claim. People were making that claim. There were some people that were saying that once you were saved, a person can live under the power of the Spirit and never sin. Wouldn't that be awesome? If he, John says this, "If we say this, we are deceiving ourselves." And the author uses the word self-delusioned. If you believe that you have no sin, you are self-delusioned. You have fooled yourself and the truth is not in us. You are ignoring. You're ignoring the evidence. So even if you talk to somebody and you say, "Well, all right, have you ever told somebody something and it just wasn't true?" And give them an example and they say, "No," they're just ignoring the truth. That they have lied. They're just ignoring the truth. And he says, "The truth is not in us." But then he says this, "If we confess our sin," the verse we love, and it's a, it's a believer verse. "If we confess our sin," confess means what? What does confess mean? It means just to agree with God. God knows we're sinners and we just agree, "Yes, God, I'm a sinner." So a person who confesses agrees with God's evaluation that a certain behavior is, is sin, is sinful. And it deserves God's just demand for punishment. So we're agreeing, "God, I've sinned. I've sinned against you. You're a holy God. My sin before a holy God deserves punishment." We're agreeing with that. But even though God's justice demands punishment, he says this, "God will respond to a, to a repentant heart." God will respond in mercy and forgiveness to someone who asks for it. And when we confess, "God, I'm, I'm a sinner," he is faithful and righteous. He's faithful because he can forgive. He's righteous in that, in the fact that our sin deserves punishment, that the punishment has already been taken, is what that means. So him forgiving us for our sin is not him removing from the courtroom his justice. Justice has been served on his son in our place. And so he is faithful to forgive and he's also righteous and just to forgive because the punishment was owed, but yes, the punishment was paid. And it was paid through Jesus. And so he can forgive us, our sin. And then he doesn't end there. He adds, "And to cleanse us from all unrighteousness." Again, in the Greek, a singular word. And it means all, every act of unrighteousness. He cleanses us from every single specific, specific act of unrighteousness. The third if we say, first John one, ten. "If we say we have not sinned," we make him a liar. Now, what that means is correctly, it means this author says, "They treat God as if he were a liar." Because God has said, "We have sinned," and they're saying they haven't sinned. So not only are they deceiving themselves, they're calling God a liar. And they're saying, "God is wrong. God should not be condemning my, my behavior. God should not come against me. I'm doing what I wanna do and I don't think there's anything wrong with this. I don't believe God. I don't agree with God. I don't confess to God." And his word, the truth, is not in us. Last two verses for tonight, first John two, one and two. I love these verses, "My little children." I love that because John, you can hear, he's, he's not just a son of thunder who's laying it down every day and browbeating people. He, he kinda calls them in like his sheep and he says, "My little, little children." He's pastoring. He's shepherding these people. And so this hammering language coming against these, these heretics with truth. And you can hear, hear him thundering. But then he, he calms down in this pastoral, this gentle way and he says, "Little children, like, listen to me, please. This is important. I am writing you these things so that you may not sin. I'm writing these things to you because I want you to follow Jesus. I want you to be filled with the Spirit. I want you to be led by him so that you may not sin. So that you may not break fellowship with each other." This fellowship is so important. The fellowship of the church is so important. Why? The outside world is watching us. I don't want you to fall into sin and break this fellowship. It affects how the world sees us and that affects how the world sees God. Listen to me. I'm writing these things to you. But it's almost humorous. If anyone does sin, just in case, I know my writing is powerful and I'm writing powerful things so that you may not sin, but if you do, we have an advocate. And you know that word, advocate? What a powerful word. It's a, he, he calls it a, it, it comes out of the forensic setting. And that's like, when I think of forensic, you think of like a crime scene, a crime scene. So your next blank, John's use of the term children indicates a natural love for them and a desire to show them grow, to see them grow in knowledge and faith. So this courtroom setting, we, we're picturing, all right, we're on trial. And the court has appointed us an attorney. If I'm in court and somebody's gonna appoint me an attorney, somebody's gonna say, "Hey, I need you to go be Clint's attorney." I really want the best advocate, don't you? You want one that's gonna, that's gonna fight for you. He knows the law. He's gonna, he, he's gonna win for you. Guess who the attorney is here? He's public, the author says, "He's public defender number one." He never abandons us, even when we stand God's just courtroom without a, without a shred of an alibi. We're standing there without excuse. Our advocate is with us. And he is not just Jesus, not just Jesus Christ, but he is Jesus Christ, the righteous one. So I'm standing here in my sin, deserving condemnation, and right next to me is the righteous one. Verse two. "He himself is the atoning sacrifice for our sins and not only for ours, but also for those of the whole world." He himself, remember, the righteous one. All right? We, we gotta catch that. The righteous one is the sacrifice. So I tell, I like to tell people, we deserved to be there. Beaten, bloodied, naked, embarrassed, beyond, beaten beyond recognition, hanging on a cross. We deserve to be in that spot. It's everything we deserved. And it's as if God grabbed me off of there and took me and put me in a safe place and put his son right there where I, where I should be. The righteous one in my place. I know what I am. I know what I'm capable of. I know my past. I know my struggles. As do you about your own self. And what do we deserve up against a holy and righteous God? Not this. This is not what we deserve. We don't deserve this advocate. We don't deserve the righteous one to be our atoning sacrifice. Now, there are a couple of things about the atoning sacrifice. It can be translated two different ways. One is propitiation. Your, your Bible version may say propitiation. Another one is expiation. Now, propitiation means the ancient worl, it's, it's a word the ancient world would know. It meant the appeasement of a god or goddess who was believed to be angry or offended by one's actions. So there was a price, especially when you think about Ephesus. There was this huge temple. It was the Temple of Artemis. And it was one of the seven wonders of the ancient world. And all, and in this, in this place, they would go in and make sacrifices and do awful things in the name of worship. And then outside this temple, there were all kinds of things. In my mind, I think about Bourbon Street. Like craziness on top of craziness. Like everywhere you go, there's craziness and there's people that wanna read your hand and there are people that wanna give you a tarot card reading and there are people that wanna tell your fortune. And they're all, like, all this craziness is going around. This was the picture around the Temple of Artemis. And so they would do certain things to try to appease the goddess Artemis if they messed up. And these rituals were, sometimes got pretty crazy, to be honest. So they would know this, this word. But there are two different emphases, all right? We're almost done. Propitiation emphasizes result. The word propitiation emphasizes result. It means the appeasement that is needed has been achieved. I would just say, uh, the price has been paid. Atoning sacrifice emphasizes means. So one emphasizes achievement, the other emphasizes means. That means it is the instrument for accomplishing appeasement. And so where does Jesus fit into that? Well, he fills both of those roles. He achieves, he himself achieves appeasement. He himself pays the price. And the problem of human sin, get this sentence right here, church, "the problem of human sin is solved." What? Come on. Our biggest problem, the, the, the problem of eternity, the problem of our today, the problem of our tomorrow, the problem of 10 years ago. The problem of human sin solved, he himself is the atoning sacrifice. He says this, "No public defender ever offered so much for so undeserving a client." And then he adds, "Not only for ours, ours, but also for those of the whole world." And in the Greek, guess what whole world means? It doesn't mean just church. I'm not gonna fight you about it, but it doesn't just mean church. It means all the people that have ever lived on planet earth. That's what it means, halos cosmos. It means that everybody, he is the propitiation. He is the atoning sacrifice. He is the payment for all mankind, is the way I understand that. He is the payment for all mankind, is the way. I understand that. And so what does that mean? If we have this relationship with this God, then we have this amazing, incredible relationship with each other. And what should we want to do? We should want this place to be filled, which means tomorrow, when we come across people, when we look them in the face, no matter what they look like, no matter what color they are, no matter where they live, no matter who their parents are, we look them in the face, and our strong desire for them is to know this. And to know, good gracious, that the problem of their sin has been solved. Your biggest problem, man. Your biggest problem, little girl. Your biggest problem. Waiter, waitress, waitress, it's been solved. He Himself did it. Did you get all your blanks? I'm sorry that I wasn't very good at that. Ask you this question to end, on a scale of zero to 10, how regularly is confession of sin part of your devotion to God? If we believe this, if we believe that He's paid our price, and when we confess, He forgives, how often are we forgiving? It's something that I have to, I have to remind myself of it, and I'll think, "Man, it's been, has it been a couple of days since I confessed a sin?" I mean, that's just ridiculous, right? But if we believe this, then we're coming to a God that forgives our sin, and we come with confidence. And it's what we saw this morning. He is the lifter of our head. He gives us forgiveness, and He gives us victory. Let's pray. God, we're grateful for Your word. The teacher is very inadequate, but Your word is not. And I pray, God, that as a church, we would, and have, and if we haven't, that we would commit to reading Your word. And there are some difficult things in here, but there are some things that we already know that when we come across them again, it's such a huge blessing to us, God. Thank you, Father, that our biggest problem is solved. The problem that would separate us from You for eternity, the problem that would lead us astray every day, You have solved it. And I pray for unity. I pray for fellowship among us as a church. And God, it's not, I'm not harping on it because I've seen it. It's crazy that, the way that I've seen these people, how they love each other. I am so grateful for the way that they love each other, Lord. But we also know we have targets on our back. And we are all people who can be selfish. We are all people who, in a moment of weakness, we can fall. Would you please hold us up, God? Would you please keep us connected to You in fellowship with You, in fellowship with one another, and strengthen for the glory of Your name, so that the world may see how great a God You are? How great a God You are, that You would save wretches like us and change us and make us the way for the world to know the great God that You are. I pray for this Bible study as we go along, that You'd use it in our lives, that You'd strengthen us. We love You. We need You this week, God. Empower us and use us. Make us bold. Make us courageous for You, in Jesus' name. Amen. I love y'all. Thank you for being here.